Okay, I'm gonna call it to order. The Planning Commission regular meeting for March 27th. Let's call it to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chair Riley, absent. Bryce Hoesel-Fulcanic.
Present.
Commissioner Andrade.
Here.
Commissioner Quilty.
Here.
Commissioner DeBolt.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
And Commissioner Lowe, absent.
Please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. I am the United States of America and to the Republic of America, the Constitution of God, and the principle of liberty, of justice, and of all. I'm gonna open up for oral communications. At this time, anybody wants to speak to any matter within the jurisdiction of this commission, but not on the agenda can come forward, sign in and speak, please. Hold your comments to five minutes. Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'll close the oral communication.
Someone's coming forward.
Someone's coming forward. Someone's not. Wanna come?
Yes.
Is it on the agenda tonight?
It is.
Okay, well, when we get to the-
I was just saying I wanted to get my words out.
I'll tell you what, let's do this. Let's just, can we approve the minutes and then we'll advance that item? Okay. Approval of minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. That brings us to the agenda item. Oh my. Is this, is this?
The gym.
Is yours 9A?
9A.
Which one do you want to speak to, the young lady?
Yes.
Am I able to take her comments before the staff?
You can, you can.
Could you come forward, please? Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Barbara of RT Lands. I'm representing Beach Fitness in Seal Beach, and I just wanted to put forth my support for the Los Almios Gym Expansion. I'm one of the original owners and founders of that gym, and I believe it brings a lot of good to the community, not only for the parents, but also the athletes. Just another fitness facility that does very specific work for athletes and the parents of the community specifically, and I just wanted to put forth my support.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to now follow the script here. We're going to, can we get a staff report? Is that what we do here?
You going back to 9A?
Are we going to 9A or?
Yeah, 9A. 9A.
We can do 9A.
9A.
Thank you, Art.
Stay on it?
Yeah.
All right. Chair Sofulcanic and members of the Planning Commission, conditional use permit 1812, let's get up to that one, I think, 1812 M2. There we go. Is a modification of an existing conditional use permit to add 1,260 square feet to a 2,455 square foot, personal training and fitness use, physical fitness use at 10682 Los Alamitos Boulevard from a second suite at 10680 Los Alamitos Boulevard, which is right next door, in the general commercial zone. The applicant is with us here tonight, Seth Eker of Black Marble Consulting on behalf of, that's Seth right there, on behalf of Mark Cisantos of Los Al Gym. And you'll notice that there's a letter that was given to you tonight along with a letter in the staff report as well, that was attached to the staff report. He gave me a, the staff report, I mean, his letter, the first letter, a couple of weeks after he submitted the plans, because he wanted to make a couple of changes to it before he gave it to me. So, the Los Al Gym was established in 2013, and as seen in the drawing, let's get to Doorway-sized section of the wall between units would be open to provide direct access to combine the units. The applicant says that the new area would be used for one-on-one personal training and fitness assessments, which staff has conditioned in the draft resolution. The zoning code requires a minimum of one space per 200 square feet for gyms. However, this is a shopping center, so the shopping centers are parked at a minimum requirement of one space per 250 square feet. Although this is CUP, so you do have a decision to make about whether you feel like it's appropriate still to parking. Based on previous parking studies, though, one extra parking space remains to adequately serve this kind of use if it were counted as a physical fitness use. It's 1 to 200 at that point, and, you know, that one extra space would cover not only the retail, would have been if it was retail, but adding one space if it were physical fitness. So, staff does not have a reason to believe there would be problems with allowing this use to expand into the neighboring unit. It appears that the use expansion would also have minimal impact on parking. Also, the only adjacent neighboring business to it is just, there's just one business next door to it in the same building, and they've given you a letter of their support. And staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 0812 M2 and adoption of resolution 1905. So, back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Any discussion or comments or questions of staff before I open the... Okay. I'm gonna ask anybody who wants to speak on this matter to come forward, but I see we have somebody in front of us. This is Mr. Eker.
Correct, sir.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Seth Eker, resident, Old Town Seal Beach, representing the applicant from, as Black Marble Consulting. So, the letter before you also represents a brief response and synopsis once the complete staff report was done. As I'm sure you all know, this is quite a lengthy staff report with many attachments particularly pertaining to parking. I wanted to highlight a few key elements that I think are most relevant. Number one, this is a successful diverse-use business that has provided great value over time. The original space, ironically, there was a brief period where the space we're proposing to move into was conditioned previously, and so as fitness use. Then, Ms. Allison Pendegras, who is actually the operator prior to Beach Fitness taking over that space, was able to move into the 10682 space, which is a larger space on the corner of the building of the shopping center. You can see here some youth training. You can also see some mobility and form work specifically with the Los Al basketball team. In terms of staff's identification of condition 15, indeed, we do concur and agree that it is a one-on-one personal training space and assessment use. So, that means it's a single coach with a single client working individually, one-on-one with them. Right now, functionally, full-time, there are only two coaches, the managing directors and operators, with potential additional people, but this should not have a significant impact. Also, we wanted to affirm the findings of staff and the Lynn Scott Law and Greenspan Parking Study from January 11, 2016, and also their prior study in '14, which indicates that even though the brew house, kitchen, alehouse, outdoor dining, and the dentist's use, when in combination with analysis and with the hours of operation with the gym, and obviously the new adjacent space would mirror the hours of operation of the existing space, does not represent a significant impact, and plus, there's an additional space already available which could be assigned. Finally, I really want to acknowledge Tom Oliver and also all of the staff for working with us through this application process. It was fairly lengthy because of the shopping center nature and the fact that we wanted to really get before the commission prior to some of the zone code changes. Unlike some other businesses that are in the commission and also ultimately city council, we've tried very hard to comply with code, be a responsible business, and as staff reported and to the best of my knowledge, there has never been a significant problem or issue associated with this business either operating under Beach Fitness or the current DBA, the Los Al Gym. I also have the applicant with me, Mark Cisantos, and several other people to speak on behalf and in support of this. And with that, I conclude my report, and I'm available for any additional questions that the commissioner's staff might have.
Thank you. You're very well-prepared, and thank you for the comments on staff. We have a great staff, and it's good to see people acknowledging that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you leave, sir, is there any questions for? Go ahead.
Just one. Has the basic operation of the gym remained the same from the beginning?
Yes.
So, it's still like a CrossFit where it's...
It has some CrossFit components, but it shifted more towards one-on-one personal training. So, there is small semi-private group fitness training in the original space area, but in this new expansion area, it's specifically conditioned to be one-on-one personal training. We're not planning on group fitness in that area, and I believe staff reported that, as I mentioned, in condition 15.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I have a number of requests to speak. Normally, what we do is we just ask anybody that wants to come forward to come forward, and I think what I'm gonna do is follow that procedure, and when I see you've come forward, I'll put your slip aside. So, would anybody else like to speak on this matter?
Good evening. Bryce Turner, also business partner with Barbara Barti, who briefly spoke at the beginning. We've been the owners of Beach Fitness in Seal Beach on Main Street since 2006, so this is our 13th year of business, and as you guys know, in 2013, we expanded into Los Al with the original space here, and it was always our intent, once the business, now that has been out of business for, I think it's two to three years, and it's been an empty space, to move into that space at some time when it was viable for the business to do so. Mark and Alex are our business partners within this facility. The whole goal of this facility, when we opened it up, was to provide an opportunity for our staff to continue to grow within the fitness model and be their own business owners and continue to run the facility. There are our top trainers in our Seal Beach location. A lot of those clients follow them here that were not only living up this way, but appreciated the service that they were giving. And I think just most notably for them, they've done a lot of the same things that we've done in the Seal Beach community and the surrounding communities, which is they've gotten involved with a lot of charitable programs, and they've also shown a big representation in Los Al and trying to provide a youth program for sports and after-school training, even through LEAF and things like that. So, both of them are very upstanding individuals. They've been the owner-operator, or the director-operators of that facility for the last two-plus years that we've been in business, and I just wanna show my support of not only their capability, but their involvement with the community, and I guess that's it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward, please?
Hello. I'm a little short here. I guess you can hear me, I'm loud. So, my name's Tina Heron. I live at 11681 Martha Anne in Rossmore. I've been a counselor at Los Al High School for the past 17 years, and my husband's a teacher over there. My kids go to school in the district, so as Dr. Crop would say, we are all in all the time. This is our community, and we absolutely love it here. I'm just, wanna say a few words about, I work out at the Los Al Gym, and so just as a trainee there, I just wanna kinda give my thoughts of what I think of this place. And I think the best words that I can describe it is it's an absolute gem. And I think about a year ago, some of my friends coerced me to join it, and I did it, and it's been life-changing physically, which is a good thing because it's a gym, but just emotionally and mentally, what these two guys have done for this community, for me, I can't say enough words. I think if you live or work in Los Al, you know that we have something special here, and it's hard to describe unless you're a part of it. Kids don't go to Los Al High School and not come back. They grow up here, they go away to college, and they all come back and raise their families here, and we see that time and again. And these guys have created a gym and a business that represents exactly what this community is all about. And people, every shape, every size, every age, come in there, and they just become friends and a family, and everyone is supporting each other. I've never stuck with anything like this in my entire life, and, I mean, they can attest, I go six days a week, and I'm begging them to open it on Sundays. Like, it's amazing, and so I just wanna give my support. They give back to this community. They just gave me a month pass for the We Care auction next week. They'll do anything. They work with my daughter at her dance studio at On Stage Dance Center. They're bringing in the teams and working with those kids. They're all about what this community is about, and they're not just a business. And so, I just want to let you know that from, I have nothing to gain from it other than I will follow these guys wherever they go. So, and I've never had one issue with my parking, whether it's 5:30 in the morning or 5:30 at night. There's, the only issue there is that you can smell the alehouse in the bagel store while you're working out. That's the only issue. So, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward?
Hi, I'm Mark Cisantos. I'm representing Los Al Gym and also Alex, that's my business partner. I just wanna say thank you and for your consideration and your support, and also acknowledge Tom Oliver. He helped me when I started getting the ball rolling here, and I kinda didn't know what I was doing, kinda, that's when I found staff, or called up staff to help me out, and he totally took the bull by the horns on that. But anyway, I just wanna keep it short. Thank you for your consideration again and allowing us to help us grow our business. Appreciate you.
Thank you. I have another blue one, Barbara Barti, I think she spoke.
She did her own.
Okay. Does anybody else in the audience want to speak at the agenda item? Okay, seeing nobody come forward, we're gonna close the public comment and bring it for discussion here. Comments, questions, discussions?
I don't have any issue with it.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor of the approving the resolution? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The resolution passes its approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Anyone to signage?
They could all be that easy.
Okay, next, we're gonna go to, let's move to 8A. This is the plan sign program. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, we do. Chair Sofulcanic and members of the Planning Commission, plan sign program 1901 is the consideration of a plan sign program for Southland Credit Union at 10701 Los Alamitos Boulevard in the general commercial zoning district. And the applicant is here with us tonight, Tish Shalampo of Absolute Sign, I probably didn't pronounce that right, but, on behalf of Southland Credit Union. She works for the sign company. She's requesting that the Planning Commission approve a sign program consisting of three wall signs and one pole sign. This program represents a small change in the style of the existing signage. It looks an awful lot like what's there now, just a little bit more clear that you can see from the street. The zoning code permits up to 200 square feet without a plan sign program, but they wanna put in more than that. The signage would be around 462 square feet. The building is one of the taller ones in the city, so it's, you know, the signage, if we required them to do the same thing everybody else does, it's a little bit farther away from the street because of the height. So, they would like to make some changes, and let's see, we have, that's the building there, the parking lot's at the back of the building. Sign A is internally lit channel letters with a logo cabinet sign next to it, and the sign will not exceed 238 square feet. Sign B is internally lit channel letters also with a logo cabinet sign on the north side of the building. This will not exceed 81 square feet. Sign C is just a logo sign. It will be 43 square feet. And then the last part is a sign that's been there already, but they would like to raise it up higher to where the top is at 20 feet. It's at 12 now, and they can have up to 50 square feet per side, so that's what they would like to maintain. And staff does recommend approval of this plan sign program, 1901, as condition. So, back to you, Chair.
Thank you for that, Tom. Before we move on, I think I should have brought this up before. I think I know the answer, but I just want to be on the record. I'm gonna seek a comment from council. I'm a Southland Credit Union member. Do I need to recuse myself?
I appreciate you bringing that to my attention, but that, your membership in the credit union would not constitute a disqualifying conflict of interest in this case.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, any questions of staff? No? Okay, I'm gonna open up to the public. Anybody wants to come forward and speak on this item, please come forward and state your name and sign in.
It's Tish Shalampo. You were close. Absolute Sign representing Southland Credit. The reason actually for the change, obviously, is a rebrand. We're rebranding all their locations all over Southern California, as well as they're expanding as well and opening new locations, but basically what you see is a rebrand. The old logo, not very dark, not very visible, and so they're trying to, you know, I guess, enhance their image a little bit, so to speak, brighten up things. And so, we have proposed, all those three signs are on spider frames hanging off that glass building as the existing is as well. I believe the perspective is good. It's, all the square footage of the sign is relevant to the size of the building. They do have some visibility issues since the median was put in and access to the building. So, on the, I guess that's north and south, no one really sees them, and that was a reason for wanting to put some additional signage up on those elevations. So, you know, coming down the street, it'll be visible now because that's an entrance on that one side to entrance to that parking lot. So, and then coming the other way, then, you know, we signed it with the logo. Hopefully, you know, they'll become the Nike of the banking industry because Nike can get away with that. So, we just put the logo there because of the limited availability of signage space. The issue with the pole sign, that was kind of unfortunate. That reader board is very difficult to read at that height. It's a 20-millimeter board, which really is meant to be read at somewhere around 20 feet. Reading it this low, it becomes very pixelated. It's not the major issue of, you know, what we're looking for. It was just something that, it's possible that they would wanna revisit that with that at the right height and possibly the correct reader board in the future. So, really, it's not the main issue. The main issue, obviously, is their signage, and I mean, it's, that's about it. Anybody has any questions or...
Questions? No? Thank you.
Okay.
Would anybody else in the audience like to come forward and speak to this agenda item? Okay, seeing nobody coming forward, I'm gonna close it, bring it back to commission. Anybody have any comments, questions?
I do.
Concerns? Yes.
I wanna thank you for saying that there was a problem with reading the board. I have had trouble from the day it was put up, and I wondered sometimes if it was just me, but I drive down the street, and I can't read the board. So, that made me feel better. But other than that, I don't have any problems with it.
Any other comments, questions? If not, then move approval. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second for the approval of the plan sign program. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Looks good.
That makes, that brings us to agenda item 9B, which is the expanded hours, request to expand the hours of operation at the Griffin Grill, 11272 Los Al Boulevard. We have a staff report, please.
Yes, Chair Sofulcanic and members of the Planning Commission, we have a conditional use permit 1901, which is the consideration of a conditional use permit to extend the operational hours until 2:00 a.m. That's what they applied for at Griffin's Grill Restaurant, 11272 Los Al Boulevard. The applicant is here with us tonight, Mike Gadd of Griffin's Grill, and also probably other partners as well. And they will, they, you can ask some questions in a little bit. You can sit down for now, and then we'll call you up. Sorry. Mr. Gadd has submitted an application for the conditional use permit to extend the hours for the restaurant, and it is also a bar that also has entertainment, and it was originally approved as a cocktail lounge in 1991. The Los Alamitos Municipal Code says that a CUP is required for any of the service establishments that operate past 10:00 p.m. at night, basically, or before 6:00 a.m. and in the morning, so that's why they're here. The restaurant would include alcohol service during those extended hours. The nearest residential zone property is adjacent and approximately 75 feet to the west, which is in the back parking lot. Let me bring this up here, please. Okay, so I didn't put that slide in there. Okay, so it's back there is where the homes are. The restaurant, let's see, is 1,090 feet from, to the south of St. Hedwig, which is another consideration. And based on historical use, it's not anticipated that the extended hours would significantly impact the surrounding land uses. No one's ever complained to us about the restaurant, and the rear doors of the restaurant will continue to be conditioned to be closed to customers. That's always been a condition they've had. And most of the surrounding businesses are closed by 10:00 p.m., but the exceptions are Wendy's, it's open until 12:00 a.m. or midnight, and Von's is open until 2:00 a.m., and the Jack in Box, Jack in the Box is open 24 hours. Two existing bars are located to the north on Los Alamitos Boulevard, Boondocks, which is in Los, I mean, in Rossmore, and that's open until 2:00 a.m. And then there's, I mean, I'm sorry, Boondocks is in the city, The Sportsman is in Rossmore, and they're both open until 2:00 a.m. And staff anticipates that the greatest customer demand and interest for the extended hours would be Friday and Saturday. That's what we as staff feel like it would be. And so, we've put in a condition that they, the other five days of the week, they only be open until midnight. You can change that, of course. And staff has also added a condition to address that there be no live entertainment past midnight on Fridays and Saturdays and 10:00 p.m. all other evenings. And if the commission has further concerns about potential noise impacts, we can, of course, add more conditions if you have those. We have been told that the business is currently for sale, so we're not sure what, how that plays into this. Staff recommends approval of CUP 1901 and adoption of resolution 1906 that extends hours to allow closing time of 2:00 a.m. on Fridays and Saturdays and midnight on Saturday through, Sunday through Thursday. I'm sorry, I'm just pronouncing everything wrong. And that's what we would like to, I mean, we recommend approval for. Back to you.
Thank you, Tom. Before we move on, I just wanted to point out, I'm sure everybody's aware of it, that the request was for extended hours of operation, and there's a lot of discussion in here regarding noise, and although they're related, we should keep in mind when we're discussing this that they are separate and can be, the noise can be addressed as they are.
Right.
With conditions.
Yes, and we do have a noise section of our code that they have to adhere to.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any comments?
I just have a question for staff as well. The conditions were changed from their request of being open until 2:00. Were they, and they were okay with that?
They would like to talk to you about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else? Any questions, staff?
What's the hours of the fish company, the bar they put up?
10 a.m., 10 p.m.
10 a.m.?
Yeah. 10 p.m., yeah. I just called them the other day.
Anything else?
No.
Anything else? Okay. I'm gonna open up a public discussion. Anybody want in the public, and the audience wants to come forward and speak on this matter? Anybody want in the public, and the audience wants to come forward and speak on this matter, please come forward, sign in, state your name, and keep your comments too.
Have the applicant go first. Have the applicant come up.
Are you the applicant, sir?
I am.
Wonderful.
My name is Michael Gad, and I have my partner with me here, Pat Stafford. We are the owners of Griffin's Grill, and we are the applicants. Restaurant business is very competitive, and we know that being, the hours that we have today, we know we lose some business, we know we lose some customers. So, we have provided the staff a list of 20-some-odd restaurants and bars in the surrounding area, and their hours of operation, and hardly anybody closes when we close. So, to help ourselves from a competitive perspective, maintain customers, maintain our, our business, we'd like to extend the hours until 2:00 a.m. Staff has asked us to consider closing at midnight during the week. That is something that we would accept, but it's not something that we sought. What we really seek is to be able to be open till 2:00 a.m. We have owned the restaurant for a couple of years. We have never had a noise complaint. We have never had the police come. We've never had an altercation. We've never had anything get out of hand. I know that noise is an issue, and if I lived 75 feet behind the back door, I'd probably be concerned, too. But we did a little experiment on Friday night. Friday night, we had the loudest band that we ever have, and Pat stood at the back fence with his phone and did a video to try and record any noise that we would have that would come beyond the back door. And we put it up on YouTube. We'd be happy to play it for you, but there is no noise. There just isn't any noise. By the time you get to the sound stage up in the front of the restaurant, you're a long way, and you have lots of sound barriers between that stage and the back fence where the people live. We understand the issue. We understand it clearly, but we've never had a problem, we've never had a complaint, and what we tried to do was take our loudest band at their loudest time and see for ourselves, is there, is there a reason from noise perspective that we would, that we would be asking somebody to put up with something that we ourselves wouldn't put up with? And as Pat taped this and did the video, you can see there just isn't any noise, so.
Okay, any questions for applicant?
Would you like to see that video, Chairman?
Well, sure.
Turn it all the way up, Tom.
Oh, it's not that quiet.
Yeah, it's not that quiet. There's something going on.
I was gonna say, it's pretty quiet.
There's some sound you can hear in the street on the side.
Okay, there we go. Well, it worked earlier. We shut off while we were talking, so.
We don't guarantee technology.
Yeah.
Maybe we can view this later if it, if it becomes an issue.
It's fine.
Yeah. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
I do, I'm sorry. I do have one question. They mentioned that the, the business is up for sale.
Yes.
So, what part of, I guess, this plays into the sellability of, I mean, I don't know how long you plan on, on having it. Obviously, you said you wanted to be competitive, but if it's up for sale, you probably don't anticipate having it hopefully too terribly long, so, I mean, is this, is this more of a sellability standpoint?
I think it plays into sellability. Our personal situations have changed, and we find it necessary for the two of us to kind of move on from this particular business. This wasn't what we anticipated when we bought it, but things in life happen, and so we find it necessary, convenient for us to kind of exit the business. So, we have put it up for sale. I can't, I can't guarantee when it would sell. Having the hours opened longer would certainly make it more attractive to a buyer. If we do succeed in getting our permit, we will ourselves open the, keep the bar open longer, and the restaurant open longer. But yes, it is up for sale. It is not something, we didn't anticipate owning it for a couple of years, let me say it that way.
Anything else? Thank you, sir.
I think just to add to that last point Mike was making, my name is Pat Stafford. Running a business is all about profitability. If there's nobody there, and I, we're gonna shut down. I don't want to keep extra staff around. I don't want to, you know, if there's no customers there to service in the area.
Oh, my apologies. If there's no customers there that are looking, you know, to use or stay late, then we don't want to be there either, so we shut it down. And we are, I shot that video myself, stood in the back, close to the fence with houses behind me, you can't hear anything. And then if you just imagine now, you got your doors shut and such, you just can't hear anything. And we specifically chose that Friday night, full house, loud band on the stage, or one of the more active bands was up there, and you just can't hear anything from the back, so, thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else come, like to come forward? Step forward, please.
Hello, Michael Bullock, 11291 Davenport Road, not in back of Griffin's, in front. So, right about where the Los Al, in that map that you had, right where the Los Alamos is, is pretty much where Davenport is. It's a parallel, it's a first straight parallel to Los Alamos Boulevard, and almost directly in front of Griffin's. So, the study that was done were kind of right here. The study that was done and evaluated the, the noise issue. I spoke with the city planner last week, and I understood, I was the first one to complain, so.
Number one.
But we have no issue with the, and I don't want to ruin the sellability of your facility. We have no issue with how late Griffin's is open. They can be open 24/7. That wasn't the issue. The issue is, at first, we thought there was somebody driving up and down the street with their stereo on, and mainly at the base vibrates and travels quite a bit. And if that same recording were to be on Davenport Road, I don't know, maybe the doors are open sometimes, but it is an issue. I'm sorry that the people on the eastern side of Davenport aren't here. I talked to them about the hearing, and try, I was trying to motivate them, but they're not here today, tonight. It doesn't affect me on the west side as much as it does them. They, they have children, and their bedrooms are in the back of their property. It's, you know, the signature wall, that's their, their homes, right there. And I, I am very concerned about the due diligence being done as, as we spoke in terms of evaluating the, mainly the, the base. We just hear that, and I've come out in the middle of the night, and I, we also didn't know that there was a limit 10 o'clock, because that wasn't in the original notice of this hearing, that there was a variance with the, also including the noise. And apparently, there's something up until 10:00, and it, it sometimes goes beyond that. None of us have gone to the extent of complaining to the authorities, and when presented with the jurisdictional issue, there wasn't a clear answer. Maybe you could answer that if we did have a complaint. The Orange County Sheriff takes care of the homes and the properties. That's jurisdictionally the, where we would call. We're actually not part of Los Alamos for lots of reasons. But you are in Los Alamos, and so I, my question was, should we call up the Los Alamos Police Department? Should we call up the sheriff? And your city planner wasn't sure. Do you know? And there are, there are people that are concerned about it. We just never, we just kind of put up with it. At first, like I said, I thought it was, I would come running out in my robe and see if there was someone going up and down the street with their, you know, stereos in the car blasting, but never saw anybody. So, eventually, we figured out where it was coming from. Any questions?
No, I appreciate your, your comments and your, and your representation of the impact on you, and as far as who you should contact, I'm gonna leave that to, maybe you could talk to staff later. I can't address that right now.
Right. So, at any rate, I would like you, you know, the, the time of their open, that is not an issue for any, any of us. But it is an issue, you know, maybe it would be an issue of like on the big days when they're, it is Friday night, which is really the, you know, night when we hear the noise most. Maybe we could have the doors closed or something during, during that, maybe after 9:30 or 10:00. But there is definitely, I, clearly, I couldn't hear anything going back.
None of us could.
But I've lived in, in this home since 1981, so I've been there a while, and it's not, it hasn't been since 1981 that we've had that issue. But if someone could come out on Davenport, and I think he'd probably have a different result. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
There's a letter from Mr. Madnick in your report as well.
I saw that.
So, they were noticed? Everybody along there was noticed?
Yes.
Within 500 feet?
Yes, within 500 feet, yeah.
Hold on, sir. And this letter that we received is part of the file, correct?
Yes.
Do we have your letter, sir?
That's the neighbor, one of them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, if I could just follow up with that comment. Absolutely, we will look to close the doors. I would like to say, with the exception of one Friday night a month, is the band that we spoke of earlier, we play acoustic music on Friday nights, and it's been that way well over a year. So, that's, we do acoustic sets on Friday nights.
It's just a bass, that's all. We don't actually have.
There's no bass.
Okay. All right. Understood. Would anybody else like to come forward?
Hi, my name is Cindy Mann. I'm at 11291 Pine Street, which is directly behind Griffin's Grill. And I would say, like, I don't have any problems. I haven't really had too much problems with noise since they've been there, so I appreciate that. I used to have a lot of problems with Mr. B's. Mainly drunk people in the back. They go out the back door, they smoke, they drink, they talk, they laugh. They get in their cars, they put on their stereos really loud, which does periodically happen now, but it's very, very few and far between. We've had problems with people drag racing along that alley in the back. But again, a lot of that happened when Mr. B's was around. I'm just concerned that if they open up the hours to 2:00 a.m., that will be more of a place where people will want to go and drink late and be very noisy in the back. My son's window faces out directly towards the door that Mr. B, that the Griffin's Grill back door goes out of. And my concern more is just the clientele, the customers being in the back. I actually think the bands are great. I love that. I love that I can walk around and go see music. I don't ever hear it. My son never hears it. The issue has always been the customers who come out drunk and are very, very loud. So, that would be my concern, that there's no customers in the back, there's no parking for the customers in the back, and that be a condition to them being open later. That's my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to come forward? Seeing that, I'm going to close the public hearing.
To the chair, if I may.
Yes, please.
I'd like to provide a quick clarification that perhaps addresses the comments that we received from the prior speaker. This project, as well as any other development in the city, is subject to the noise, to the city's noise standards. The exterior noise standards are measured at the receiving end of any property, residential, commercial, or otherwise, and the municipal code expressly provides that those are properties either within or without the city. So, if there's a property that's not within the incorporated jurisdiction of the city but is still receiving noise in excess of our noise standards, a call to city staff and city police would be appropriate, and the noise standards would apply in that instance.
Thank you, counsel. Did you hear that, sir? Yes, in the code section the counsel's referring to is like 17.24.050. Hold on, sir.
Did I understand that because we're not part of Los Alamos, we're not, the pollution to ourselves isn't an issue?
No, no, what I'm attempting perhaps inartfully to say is that the noise standards apply to businesses located within Los Alamos, but those standards may well be measured from properties outside the jurisdictional boundaries. So, they're intended to preserve your quality of life as well.
Thank you, counsel. And again, that's 17.24.050.
Zero six zeros, exterior noise levels, yes.
Any comments, discussion?
I, I do have, I do share the concerns of the young lady that came up. Not that, not that I've experienced anything at 10:30 at night, but I am sensitive to residents who abut businesses and, and any other uses that may impact on their quiet enjoyment, their enjoyment of their property. And that goes a ways back, just from having lived in an area where we had impacts that really nobody, you could complain, but in the end, nothing really could get done. They would quiet down, and unfortunately, if you're a homeowner, even, even if you're just renting, you know, your choice is pretty limited. I mean, you either move, or you, you know, suck it up. For me, I can appreciate the difference between Mr. B's and Griffin's, okay? And if Griffin's, I guess, I guess if you were telling me that you're selling your business and you're leaving, we now introduce a, a big unknown into this equation, and that's an unknown that, that to me is a concern, because once we, we approve a project, or this type, it, it runs with the land, and, and it's kind of like, we're stuck with it, and the residents are stuck with it. And, and I would just say that for me, a, a serious concern is the unknown of who eventually buys the business. We don't, it's just an unknown. And I, I have a little, I'm, I'm not quite sure that I'm inclined to go with an extension to 2:00 a.m. and even to midnight. We, we have one bar in town, we have two, I guess if we want to count the one down the road, on Catala.
Starting Gate.
Starting Gate, where the problems there ebb and flow. Right now, we're in a, we're, we're in an ebbing point. There, there hardly any problems down there, but, but I can attest. Time's passed. I mean, it just kind, it comes and goes with the ownership. And, and unfortunately, fortunately or unfortunately, the businesses are there. So, as far as I'm concerned, I'm, that's the concern that I have, is the unknown, and to go from a 10 o'clock closing to a 2:00 a.m., I'm not, I got my concerns that way.
Anybody else?
I have the same concerns. I have, we're putting a CUP with an unknown factor, and we don't know if somebody were to buy it, that they wouldn't come in and do just the opposite of what you did. You guys have been extremely respectful to the citizens in our town and across in the neighboring town, but we can't guarantee that a new owner with a CUP sitting there would give the same respect, and that's what we have to be concerned about. The fact that you're selling, I understand that this will help the sale, but it doesn't help the residents, and that's my concern.
Thank you.
Can I ask counsel, if we did approve this, and then a bunch of, you know, they sell it, it's some rowdy bar, and a bunch of noise complaints come in, what happens then?
Yeah, I would actually, if we could draw your attention to what I believe is page four or five in your four or five in your staff report. Staff has actually recommended or proposed for your consideration an additional condition of approval that would allow you, in that instance, if we were to approve and found ourselves in a situation where the use results in noise complaints or other nuisance conditions, the condition we're proposing would actually allow the director to pull the permit back in front of the commission and consider revocation or the addition of, of new or added conditions to address whatever operational concerns you may have at that time.
The noise ordinance is ten PM, right? For, for band?
That's, that's when it changes to the lower sound. It's like fifty-five during the day and then fifty at night. I told her forty-five.
At ten, ten PM to seven AM, the standard becomes more stringent.
So any bands that they have after ten have to adhere to a ten PM noise standard?
Right, right.
Or a noise for that matter, even, even noise outside the, outside the property?
Correct, yeah.
Would be the same?
Yeah. And of course, we need complaints to know.
Of course.
So, yeah.
I'd like to ask counsel, the, the language you just read to us about the city's ability to pull the permit, is that, do we have firm legal footing to do that?
What it provides is the opportunity for the, the CUP to come back to the planning commission, for the planning commission to evaluate whether continued use of the CUP is warranted. And, and there's absolutely a basis for doing that, and it's intended as a protective measure so that if in application, you later find out that this use is causing problems in the community, you're able to address those issues rather than just being stuck by a prior approval when you weren't entirely sure of what that use would look like on the ground.
What would trigger this? Would have to be chronic complaints or would be the severity of the complaint?
As written, it's just, in the event the city receives noise or other public disturbance complaints in connection with the use authorized by the CUP. So it could be one complaint that comes into planning staff that they feel is significant enough to bring this back to your attention and to evaluate whether conditions have changed that warrant revocation or modification of the permitted use.
Can I seek the director's?
There would be some expression, right? We would, we would assess and evaluate those that come in.
Where's it in the conditions?
Is it in the resolution?
It has, it has not been added to the resolution. It was in the staff report as an option to consider if there were concerns about potential noise or nuisance conditions, if this was a condition we could incorporate.
On the bottom of page.
Okay.
Well, you know, I would, uh, I'd like to say that when I read this, you know, um, they pointed out other establishments that stay open till two o'clock. And one of them was the Sportsman, I believe, and although it's not in our jurisdiction, it's in, I believe, Sil Beach, Rossmore.
Rossmore.
It's not within our jurisdiction. It is in close proximity to this establishment, so I was thinking to let them be competitive. We should, we should, uh, maybe consider giving similar hours. And, you know, I was thinking about language that basically would say that, uh, no outside amplified music or outside disturbances such as people going outside, maybe intoxicated, getting loud, getting rowdy. But then there is the unknown about who the next proprietor is going to be. Once you sell, who are we going to get in here? We don't know that. And again, this CUP runs with the land. But what counsel's telling me now, that we can pull this CUP back if there's, if there's, if there's disturbances?
The, the, the point of analysis for the CUP really is the use that's being applied for, not necessarily the particular tenant or owner of the business within which it's operating. So, so this condition allows you, again, to keep your focus on conduct and address conduct as, as needed without tying any of the approvals to a particular owner per se.
So, so any potential buyer, they would be, become aware of the language that allow the city to pull the, the, the permit back?
That's correct.
And since it's kind of vague where it says if someone complained, it could be just somebody who didn't want the bar there. The problem comes up, if they come up and then we don't acknowledge it, when can we end up in a lawsuit over this? If we don't have specific language? So I would be real careful to put a CUP with something.
Yeah.
That doesn't have, it's just not, it just seems to me that we're opening up a Pandora's box.
It's, I, I am perhaps not understanding that, that line of thinking. It's really intended to be a protective measure for the city, and, and it's intentionally leaving some discretion with the planning staff to determine what they think is significant in the sense of deciding when to bring it back to you, at which time the commission itself has the ability to retain its discretion over the CUP in the same manner you're exercising it tonight. So it, it's essentially an opportunity to have an update on the facts or, or understand better what's happening at that business. And if there's an issue that needs to be addressed, you have that opportunity, rather than finding yourself in a position tonight where if the, if the commission rather approves the CUP, you're stuck with it. And, and there's not necessarily a mechanism to pull it back if there are problems. This, this is just giving you an opportunity to retain some jurisdiction and control over that use, notwithstanding the fact that you may vote to say, yes, you can operate this use until two AM.
Commissioner DeVault?
Uh, sir, let me open the, when I open the floor for public comment, you can speak. Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner DeVault?
Okay. I seem to remember, not, not this exact situation, but a situation where we, we were struggling with an issue and trying to either have a, a, a CUP issued for a, a period of time, you know, come back and revisit it at the end of a year, this type of a thing. And, and basically, the attorney at that time, I don't remember who it was, wasn't you, uh, your friend, uh, basically said that's a non...
But that was a different thing.
I don't remember exactly what...
That was trying to break, you know, we wanted to give it to him for a year, basically, and then have the, and then we'd reassess it.
And have the ability to come back.
But this is like if they get complaints, we have the ability.
Well, but, but there's still a process there. I mean, I, and, and I don't believe this is going to be as easy as what it's represented, that our staff is the arbiter and, and is, is the decision maker. And, and next thing you know, either, either, you know, whether the complaints come in and are documented, ultimately, the staff has to make that decision, uh, to, uh, to bring it back into us, and then we, our choices are what? Revoke the permit. I mean, do we, do we, I mean, and, and then invite, what type of action going forth? I mean, obviously, there's administrative, you know, uh, I mean, just, just pretend that today is the day, and we're in there and we're revoking a permit, and, you know, it's going to go on appeal to the council, and it's going to go, you know, with threat of litigation, I mean, not to get too far afield here, but, but, you know, threat of litigation, and we're going to spend all kinds of money, and da-da-da-da-da, and then, then we're, I, I, I don't know, I'm just, I think we deal with what we've got in front of us, in my opinion, and we make a decision. I, I don't like the idea of, of the sword of Damocles hanging over somebody in the end.
Commissioner, address?
It's a mess.
Uh, two questions. There was, you, you mentioned that there already is a provision that the back doors remain closed.
Correct, yeah. That under earlier resolution that this is an amendment to.
That would already, that would stay with, as well.
Right.
The new owners would have to keep the back door closed, right?
But it's closed now.
Yes, it's supposed to be closed now.
But that would probably been a help to the noise on the backside.
Right, but I don't think it's closed and locked, right? People are still, I mean, not for all the smokers.
No, it's, it's an emergency exit, so it has to be unlocked.
Yeah, they don't, they don't go out the back though, I don't think.
No, it's, it's just for emergencies.
Yeah, they all park back there, and they all smoke back there.
That, that's the, well, let's let them talk about it, but I, I assume that that was the, uh...
From smokers' go.
The people that work there, uh, are allowed to go out that door. So that might be them as well, too, so I'm not sure.
Do you have another question? Well, that would be a question for them as well as one of the...
That's why I say if it were Griffin's...
But even if, even if it is their policy now, the new owner can change that policy.
I don't think so. It's in the, it's in the CUP.
No, it's, it's in the, in the resolution. And I think I reconditioned it in their, in your new resolution. I, I repeated it.
I don't, I don't see it the same. I, I like the ability, I like that provision to be able to, uh, at the discretion of staff, have it brought back to us, to be able to make any modifications to it based on complaints. Because, I mean, at the end of the day, that's what we're trying to do, is, is make decisions that eliminate or reduce severely, um, any complaints from, from the public, trying to protect them. So, um, to have that ability, I think, is a big deal for this. Personally, I think it's, it's a good thing. But the two questions I have are for the applicant, so if you want to put them back.
Any other questions before we open?
Could I add one thing to that, just as, as a follow-up? And last, and I had a quick sidebar here, but to, to answer your question, Commissioner DeVault, the planning commission could in fact require that the CUP come back on a periodic basis for review. The condition that I've proposed is intended to perhaps avoid that administrative burden if there aren't problems occurring. But if, if the commission would prefer to, to keep a closer leash on any CUP, you can absolutely ask that the applicant return within a specified time period to report back and to take comments on how, how the business is functioning. I've seen that done in several other jurisdictions, and from the, the quick exchange lesson I had on the subject, he apparently has seen the same thing done as well. So that's, that's within your purview if you'd prefer to do it that way.
And if I could expand upon that, the, when there is questions, where I've seen this used is there is questions as to how will, how will a particular conditional use, this, this action work? So I've seen where commissions have said, okay, we want a, whatever, a twelve-month, eighteen-month review conducted. It comes back to the commission. It's at the commission's discretion that as to if you want to review it again, or if you feel it's performing as was promised, and as, as, you know, everything's going fine, then you can remove that or extend it further. But it at least allows for that opportunity for, you know, for revisiting the matter and making sure that it's operating as, as was represented. There's pros and cons to that. I mean, a lot of, a lot of applicants don't like that because they don't have assurance that, that what's being granted them has, has a perpetuity provision, but it also keeps them in check, too. And that's why I've seen commissions put that in place.
Anything else before, before I open the public? Okay, uh, I'm going to open this up to the public. Anybody who wants to speak, give some additional input?
Well, the only thing I was going to say is someone used the word conduct, and conduct is precipitated by customers. And if you've been to Griffin's, uh, you pretty much understand, we really don't have a wild clientele.
Yeah.
Uh, this is Los Alamos, it's a pretty tame community, and I don't believe that we would expect to see, uh, that kind of conduct in the future. We haven't had complaints. No one has come to us about noise across the street. No one has come to us about noise in the back. No one has come to us about, uh, people smoking in the back and causing problems. No one has come to us and talked about drag racing. So we would be the first line of defense. I don't know who might buy the bar and the restaurant, I have no idea. It could be somebody different from us, a different character, different opinions and so forth. I don't know. But if you severely restrict us, it's going to put a hardship on us. And so having a business in Los Alamos is kind of a two-way street. We want to provide a service, and you all want to allow us to have that service, and I think so far, it's worked pretty well. We've worked with Tom to come up with, I think, a workable solution. It's something, it's not what we asked for, but it's something that we would accept. And so we'd just like to see that spirit of cooperation come our way, too, give us an opportunity. If they put the language in that somebody has a lot of complaints, I don't have a problem with that. If somebody has a lot of complaints, they deserve to come back and talk to you. Anybody who's going to be responsible in operating their business in the long term is going to make sure they don't have a lot of complaints. You don't operate a business to have a lot of complaints and to have a lot of problems. No one who has a business wants problems. Problems cost money. Problems take away from your focus. And so if someone comes in and does something different from us, and they cause problems, they deserve to come back and talk to you. I don't have a problem with that. But I think what we're asking for is give us, give us, give us some cooperation, give us a chance to make this thing work. That's what we ask for. Thank you.
Before...
Thank you. Sir?
Just have a question, couple of questions for you. If you could elaborate more on the, the back, back door, how that's, how that's utilized? Just so I know.
Well, there's a front door and a back door, and I'm sure the fire marshal will say you can't lock the back door.
Right.
And so people will go out the back door, smokers go out the front, smokers go out the back. Can't smoke in the restaurant, got to go someplace if you're going to smoke. So they will go out in the back. We provide lawn chairs for them to have a seat, have their smoke, uh, and then return back to the restaurant. So there are smokers that go in the back. And the door is closed. It closes automatically. We have a, a kitchen door that has a screen door on it that locks, but that door also has a hard door that we do lock. So no one goes out the kitchen side, they go out the customer side, exit by the restroom. So it is ingress and egress. So people do go out the back, but the door closes automatically. It's not a door that we would want open, it's not a door that we would leave open, because then it ruins all the conditioned space and the conditioned air. So we do have a back door, it is open, people go out, people come in, that's where the smokers go, but it is not the main door.
And you have a full liquor license there, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Just a further comment. I, I would just simply say that once you get past probably eleven or twelve, for sure, if you get into the early morning, the ambient noise is gone, virtually gone, and the sounds are going to carry. And, and, uh, if people are utilizing the back, I mean, the door, like he says, the door has to be left open. If they're back there and if it's at two in the morning, one in the morning, it's not going to be the same clientele probably that's there at ten at night. And...
Nothing ever good happens at two AM.
My mother said nothing ever happened good after midnight.
That's right, after midnight.
Tom, do you get complaints about boondocks? They're up until two?
Uh, no, no, yeah, we haven't. And that's, that's, uh, the staff and city hall. I don't know if the police have gotten complaints and they've had to go out, that's, that's a different thing. But, uh, yeah, no, no.
But the difference with the boondocks, I can tell you, my office is right behind the boondocks, okay? So you have, you have the parking lot behind the boondocks, then you have the office building, and then you have another parking lot before you get to the apartments.
Right.
So, uh, now I have seen people staggering, not staggering, but, but going into the bar at, at six in the morning, six thirty or seven in the morning, you know, I mean, walking. It's a nice place to walk to if you need to get a drink that early, but, uh, so I don't think, you know, on the other hand, I would, I think that we've had more problems with the, uh, down on Catala.
Starting Gate.
The Starting Gate, it's almost the same situation. And not that you're the Starting Gate, but that's, I, it just...
A little different clientele than Griffin's Grill, in my opinion.
It is today, but tomorrow could be, after the sale, it could be... Right, if the owners change the branding.
Yeah, you just, you just don't know. I, I, well, I'm where I'm at, so it's...
Well, just, um, I, that, that's the concern, is exactly what Art was saying, is it gets a lot quieter after ten, after ten PM, you know, midnight, two in the morning, it's quiet. That's given people an opportunity to have more to drink and possibly get a little louder out in the back where they're smoking, which then creates, you know, if, if somebody's hearing noises at ten PM, it's a little easier for them to tolerate than it is at midnight or two in the morning. And so that's, that's obviously the, the danger or the concern. Not that that's going to happen, but that's, that, that's where things get louder and escalate and possible complaints, uh, take place. So with that being said, there is a provision in here to be able to take care of that.
Right.
So, you know, um, I, I understand that their point of trying to stay competitive with other places around, um, the, the sellability is kind of irrelevant to me. That's, I mean, they had that going in, so that's not a decision maker for me, but, um, but, you know, certainly to allow them to run a viable business, that, that is important, so.
Yeah.
Well, it's viable to this point.
Any conclusions?
I don't, they don't have, we don't have it written in here, first off, with the noise or coming back.
No, he said they would add it.
No, yes.
Right.
So I just wanted to make sure.
What the complaint, you mean?
With the, no, with the noise section, if we add that to the resolution. No, he added that as an option.
Yeah, I know, that I understood.
Yeah.
Just a question from the staff report. You listed Sportsman, and you have a location in Los Alamos. Is that correct, or is it in, uh...
That's in Rossmore, yeah.
In the county.
Changed, okay.
Yeah, those were provided by the applicant, and then I double-checked them, I called them, so, to make sure.
Thank you. Just a reminder, Commission, we have options here. We have the applicant's request, we have staff's recommendation to limit it to Friday and Saturday, we have the ability to amend it with the language of council brought forward on the record, so we can fashion this a certain way.
Yeah.
Or we can proceed as it is.
I'd be inclined to go with the staff recommendation with limiting the time on, from Friday to, it'd be Friday and Saturday night.
Sunday, Thursday.
Yeah, I agree.
Would that also...
And add the noise section.
With the added language, with the added language of coming back.
Of, yeah, any complaints.
So, we got three commissioners that would like the limited days with the added language?
Right.
Do you want to comment on that?
I can go along with that, as long as everybody else is good with that.
Uh, so maybe...
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution with the noise section added in. So, just the Sunday through Thursday till midnight, and Friday, Saturday till 2:00.
Right.
And remember that the music as well, and that is part of that. That's, yeah, okay.
And together with the...
With the language.
Language to come back, if there is a complaint, complaints will come back to us.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure. Then I'll second that.
Okay, before we, before I get a roll call, I would just like to point out, we received, three people come forward today expressing concerns, not necessarily, one individual came forward, presently doesn't have a concern, but had a concern with the prior owner. Another person came forward with a concern, and we got a letter from another concerned resident. Okay. So, having said all that, and having that on the record, we have a motion and a second to accept the resolution with the limitation on nights and with the additional language. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, the amended resolution passes. Thank you.
So, I think the key is, if you do have a noise complaint, make sure to call Tom.
Yes, please.
And let him know. Tom Oliver, the planning department.
Call the police department. Call the police department.
No, what I would do is then have code enforcement go out, and they measure. Our code enforcement officer would go out and measure.
But at night, at night, he has a problem at night, he can call the police department.
Call the police department. If it's, if it's right, then you want it shut down. But if you, if you feel...
Los Al Police.
Los Al?
Yes.
Because the bar is in Los Alameda's, or the restaurant.
That's fine, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
You had skipped over discussion and consent calendar.
There's nothing there, right?
Into the record.
Okay. Okay, we have nothing on the discussion, nothing in consent calendar. We've done staff reports, items from the director?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission members. I'll make it brief. A couple of things I wanted to bring to your attention. First, I don't know if we officially let you know, but Michelle, one of, one of a number of rock stars that I get to work with, has, was recently promoted to management analyst in our department. She hasn't been able to really function as management analyst, because we've been having, trying to find her replacement, and I would like to introduce to you her replacement. We have Maria Veronica, and I'm going to, oh, I'm going to mess up your last name. Enciso? Okay, I got it right.
What is it?
So, Maria Veronica Enciso.
Oh, really?
Is our newest addition to, and I'm just going to brag for a second, I've only been here six months, and I've got an amazing staff. I mean, the comments you hear from the public on Tom is, you guys know this, I mean, they're just an amazing crew here throughout the Development Services Department and beyond, and Maria, I believe, is going to be another one of those amazing staff members. She comes to us, we stole her from Parks and Rec, she was a part-time Rec employee, but she did fill in a couple, I think, at least once or twice over in our department in the reception area, so she was a bit of a known commodity, and both Rec and Recreation Managers had a lot of amazing things to say about her, so we snatched her up, and you'll be seeing more of her. Michelle will be bestowing all of her pixie dust on top of her, and so she can do all the amazing things that Michelle can do. But we're really excited about her, the addition that she'll be to our department and our family here.
Congratulations.
Yes, both. Thank you, Michelle.
You know, we're a stepping stone for everybody right here.
The great thing is, we're a stepping stone, and she's staying within the organization.
Right, yep.
So, really excited about both of them. I also wanted to make just a quick note of an announcement that some of you may have heard today, that we're pretty excited about that you'll see more of going forward, and that is, we've had this vacant property to the west of us that's had quite a history over the last few years, a fully entitled retail project that didn't go forward, a facelift remodel that recently occurred, and I wanted to let you know today that there is now going to be a single new tenant for that entire 150,000 square foot of property. Ebsen North America will be relocating from the Kilroy Center in Long Beach next to the airport to Los Alameda's.
Wow.
We've been working on that with Lincoln Properties in Ebsen since I first got here, and we're really excited about the news that came out this morning about that. It's been hard for us, we've been keeping our locking key for months. They told us, Ebsen said, I think back in November, we were with them, you cannot tell anybody, and we're very, very excited. It's certainly not the retail center I think that a few folks were hoping to see, but, you know, making lemonade and lemons, I think we've done a pretty darn good job with that. Well, time will tell, but the amount of investment that will be going into that property, and the fact that they're bringing approximately 600 very, very good jobs to our community, there may not be a direct, as you'd see from retail, but I think there will be a significant indirect that we will see over time, and just the ability for us to say that we're the home of Ebsen North America, I think, is, or Ebsen America is a big item for us. So, we're super excited about that. We want to let you know, there'll be likely some components, depending on what they're going to be doing there, that may come before you. Some of it's administrative on our part, but we anticipate you'll see bits of that going forward.
How long will that build out take, do you think?
We're hoping to meet, now that it's official, I've been talking with one of the main points over there, over the last week, we're hoping to meet with them in the next week or two to get a good, we know generally in conversation what they want to do, but we're hoping to actually sit down with them and get a more definitive understanding of the extent of work they want to do. If you know about the site, both of those are shell buildings, they've been completely gutted and stripped, so there's a significant, obviously, TI to be done. They want to find a way to bridge the buildings so that there can be a physical second-story connection between the two.
Okay.
As to if that's an enclosed space, conditioned space or not, that's yet to be determined. A whole new entrance that would be obviously north-facing, so you'd still have that south-facing appearance that's similar to what's here now, but they want to have a prominent main entrance, which would again be north-facing towards their parking lot and a variety of other items. We also had a lengthy conversation going back and forth then over the utilization of the parking lot. There's been a historical allowance for the city to utilize the parking lot after hours. It is not definitive install spaces, it's existed since 1971. We were able to define a number of spaces that will be available for city use, and there will be some improvements made with a new connection into the backside of the community center. So, the 30-some-odd spaces that we anticipate to have available after hours, I think will be advantageous to a lot of after-hours activities, that could be events happening here, as well as what's happening over at the community center, youth center, and even over at the Oak Gym. So, we're excited about that. We also believe that they're going to be an amazing partner, and I think that that was what really, just seemed to feel very good when we initially met with them and had a very, very long meeting in this room, that they were looking for a place to really call home, with some identity and uniqueness to it, and we were obviously looking for a great business that wanted to call Los Alameda's home. So, we think this is going to be a really good fit for us long-term, and so just want to share that news with you. I think it's very exciting news for our small and mighty community here, and we're really looking forward to it. It'll be about a year before we, well, nine months to a year before they will have their full operations over here. I think they announced in their, they said summer of 2020, we, in talking with them, anticipate that to be sooner, but obviously, they're going to be conservative in what they're announcing in a general press release. So, with that, just wanted to pass that on to you, and again, I also wanted to conclude, we're just thanking you again for all your time and effort. I know that this text amendment process is, it's a hard thing to go through, it's arduous, it's difficult, and thank you for your continued interest in this and working through it, and if we can be of any resource or assistance, one-on-one with you to talk about matters, ask, answer any questions you have, we're certainly available for that, and we appreciate the extra time you're putting in. So, with that, conclude our comments.
Thank you, Les. You want to comment on the status of Marriott?
The final floor is being framed right now. I haven't, I was trying to get by there yesterday. They're, they're close to basically having the exterior, if you will, from a framing standpoint, done. A lot of work ahead, obviously, to get that finished out. We're hopeful, they identified in a recent conversation with the owners that they want to be open by the end of the year. I think that's extremely ambitious, knowing that I had, my previous community out in the desert had a fair field that just finished up as I left, so I know how long it takes. So, probably spring of next year is when I would realistically expect them to be open for business. But it's coming along well, and another item, too, that you may have seen on Catella is the Starbucks.
I saw that.
It's framed up, going well, going along well also.
Did the second tenant get...
No second tenant for sure yet. No, we've had, we've had a handful of inquiries.
They had Rio on there to tempt us, and get us to approve it.
I was so excited when I found about Caffrey Rio, that they pulled that back.
Although, I don't want it that close. I'm better off that it's further away.
It's okay, because I took credit for the Starbucks at work. Everybody likes me.
Question of council. The provision we put in with the language we put in this resolution, the ability to pull back the permit for further review, we didn't include that in that project. Is it too late to inject that into that?
Yeah.
Those are the questions I like, that was very...
I wish you'd have known about that. I mean, you should put that in everyone.
Yeah, it's a good one.
Right?
Thank you, Les.
Thank you. Oh, yes.
I noticed that CBS is cleaning up their landscaping. It looks, starting to look a little bit better. I was hoping they would look over here to our west and go, look at that nice property now, and clean up as we go up the boulevard. And then I went to the post office today and went, yuck, they're back to Weed City again, and it doesn't make sense why they don't have a maintenance there. So, we might want to talk to them again to see if they would clean up for us, too.
We'll certainly look into that, have our neighborhood preservation officer take a look at that when he's in later this week.
Does the post office own that site, or is that owned by, who owns that site?
I don't, I don't know. I just know that it's not uncommon for those type of situations to exist. It's, in my experience, I've had several situations with post, for whatever reason, the post office and DMV offices are terrible with maintaining their landscaping. We had to take an enforcement action against the DMV in Indio. Never had to do that in my life, but we had a post office...
Don't do that, somebody might be asking you about Catella in Los Alameda's.
We will definitely look into that. Regardless of ownership, they have a responsibility obligation.
Well, if it's owned by a private party, you can always lean on the owner.
It sometimes can be easier, correct?
Tell him to do it. It's his problem, not, if he wants to try to, let him fight the post office.
But go check out CBS, because they have tore out all the plants around the bottom that were just nothing, and put new plants in. They've done the planter out, the big one, they've done more with it. So, they're making an effort. So, I'll hand that to them.
And if you can make sure you give that matrix that you sent to me.
Yes.
To everybody.
No, we'll have that out to you.
It'll make it a lot easier to review.
We'll have that out to you tomorrow morning, absolutely.
That code, then.
Thank you. Anything else? Michelle, thank you again.
Thank you.
I guess we're adjourned. We decided on the 16th at 6:00, right?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.